The Area Agency on Aging and Funding in the Senior Center. And I think we were both impressed with her and it was a positive, good experience. So, so we're looking forward to good things there. And then on that Friday, on the 28th, I went to Santa Fe to the Business Incubator for the North Central New Mexico Economic Development District Board Meeting. They're having some trouble with inactive or vacant board members and getting a quorum, so it was a little bit rough there. Ms. Abada is trying to contact all the counties and have full membership, including our county, which potentially has definitely one, but possibly two open spots, in which the county would be mostly deciding who that is. She's also visiting as many counties and board members as possible over the next few months. In the interim, we had, the director was Thomas Garcia, and he's still helping out. The meeting was really bumpy and very little action was taken because of different issues. So, a lot of things were postponed, but we did discuss a proposed cost allocation plan. So, as you know, they're working on becoming more transparent and things with the finances. So, this plan sets up percentages for each fund of the different nine funding sources that they have, and then each employee and how much percent of each fund they'd be funded by. So, for example, the general, the executive director would be paid 1% from the general fund, 81% from AAA, and so on and so forth. Representative Jim Trujillo reported that North Central's relationship with Aging and Long Term Services Division is looking much better, and the state will be allocating 112 of the monies upfront, which should help solve some of the cash flow issues because like centers were sending in for reimbursement and not getting reimbursed on time, which for us, the mayor was able to handle that, but for smaller places, that's really difficult. And he had also appropriated some funding to help with that problem as well. We reviewed a draft of the four-year amendment to the four-year plan summary for the next fiscal year. I gave a copy to the mayor because a lot of it relates to the senior center. It was noted on that letter that the contract with the Colfax County Senior Center Incorporated, that it took over with Wagon Mountain More, has been successful and is much appreciated to keep services in those areas. And it is more work, but it's very much appreciated.
Beneficial.
There has been concern with the new minimum wage increase in January, that centers will have to adjust budgets for their employees. I do know that our center has already considered this and is in good shape. The North Central Board will be meeting with the ReadyNet Board in September to discuss previous problems that stem all the way back to 2011 with some different findings there. So, hopefully that will be worked out shortly. And they did tell me that the site visit for the AAA is scheduled for next March 3rd. So, that's something that, as commissioners, we could also attend. The Colfax County Senior Center Board Meeting was July 16th at the Senior Center at 1:00. There was one visitor who attended to comment how awesome the Raton facility and staff are, so big kudos there.
Thank you.
Mr. McFaul and Mr. Johnson were all elected by acclamation. They, the budget was submitted to the AAA under protest because they kind of went back and forth for a while, but they were forced basically to reduce the budget by about $200,000, less than last year. And I know the mayor may have some comments on that later. It could cause an impact next April or May if the federal funding isn't increased, but we're hoping in the first quarter that it will be. They've been pleased with the overall quality of the Ben E. Keith Foods since they switched to food vendors. In June, the Raton Center had 1,190 congregate meals, 1,980 home-delivered meals, 853 units of transportation, 142 chore hours, and 256 home maker hours. And year-to-date, they had served over 13,000, or they had served 13,523 meals in the center and 25,261 home-delivered meals. So, that's a really huge impact on our community and our seniors. The percentages for the budget for the end of the fiscal year were looking great, and they wanted to thank again our local seniors for their support with donation toward that food cost, which really helps. They are looking to attract younger seniors, so be looking for some fun events coming up in the future, maybe some karaoke or things like that.
Maybe.
So, exciting things there. The next meeting will be September 17th. I attended the New Mexico Municipal League Resolutions Committee Meeting on July 20th in Albuquerque, along with Mayor Scotta. All the resolutions from the other committees were approved and policy, all policy changes were approved. Three new resolutions came forward, two were approved, and one was postponed for further work. So, the resolutions and policy changes will now come to the annual meeting in August for any necessary amendments, and then adoption or rejection. And then the Board of Directors for the League will meet in the fall and prioritize them as high, medium, or low for the upcoming session, and select its top priorities for the League's legislative agenda. I do plan to attend the annual conference in Las Cruces next month, and will officially graduate from the Municipal Officials Leadership Institute at that time.
All right. Right on.
And the branding team met July 8th at noon at the Center for Community Innovation, and Leighton Moon was in attendance on Zoom Conference. We discussed ongoing wayfinding and signage initiatives, which we've kind of already talked about. We discussed the upcoming photography project, which is this Friday night and Saturday. So, Friday night, we're going to be out at the golf course doing photographs of our, of local volunteers. If anyone wants to volunteer, please let me know. We're dying for more people, and I promise to bake bread for whoever shows up. We're going to be doing golfing photos up until from 4:30 to 6:00, and then from 6:00 to 7:30 or 8:00, we're going to do some disc golf photos over there. And then Saturday, we're going to start at 8:00 AM at the lake. So, pray that it won't rain too much. I love rain. We'd like to have some good photos. We're just trying to get a lot of outdoor recreation stuff for marketing with as many local photos, because we hate using stock photos, and we've kind of been forced to. That's coming up. Several thousand table tents were ordered that advertise our year-round annual events, and those will be for hotel rooms and restaurants and things like that. We also discussed ideas for building our own outdoor recreation-focused billboard assets to cut some of the cost of working with large billboard companies. And we did have a preliminary merchandising meeting at City Hall regarding the sale of branded items. And after, I think, the budget and everything settles down, Michael Ann's going to look into that a little bit further for us. Our next meeting will be August 12th. The Raton Beautification reported that the yard of the month winner for July was Sheila Castellini at 637 Cook, and the runner-up was Wes Siniff at 244 South 6th. You can still nominate people for August and September. And I want to just thank everyone in town who've worked hard to keep up or clean up their yards. I think there's, I can definitely see some beautiful things going on. I did speak at Rotary today and presented some of the signage and wayfinding projects we're working on, along with a few other city things, and everyone was very positive and had some great ideas for feedback. So, I really appreciate all they do for the community, and that's all I have.
Hey, thank you. Commissioner Jacomo.
Raton Public Service Company Board of Directors met on July 22nd, which was last night at 5:30 PM. Jessica Gonzalez, Office Manager, Reporter, Bookkeeper, presented financial and statistical information, which was approved by the Board. The Board also reviewed, discussed, and approved RPS Resolution 2019-5, 2018-19 Budget Adjustment Request. Board also reviewed, discussed, and approved Resolution 2019-6, June 30th, 2019 Financial Report. And also, the Board reviewed, discussed, and approved RPS Resolution 2019-7, 2019-2020 Final Municipal Budget Adoption. Raton Public Service General Manager Sandy Chavez gave an update on the Andrew's Year Leader in the Training that's been going on for the new leaders. And Assistant General Manager Dave Pacino reported on the PT Unit Number Four Generator and the projects around that, and his crew's been working on. Next report is on the Arthur Johnson Memorial Library Advisory Board, which met on Tuesday, July 16th, 2019. The meeting started off with a presentation by Joe Rodman of the Workforce Development Program, and was received very well. Joe covered his family investments in the programs. July 1st starts the new fiscal year for the library. Tyler's working on submitting the New Mexico State Library Report in order to qualify for the state grant and aid, which she also gave a report on all the library programs that are set up. Statistical Information for the month of May for the library, donations were zero, fines $201.10, copies made was $916.95. Memorials were zero. Programs held in the library were 20, attended by 263 persons. Story hours held in the library were four, attended by 22 persons. The Cisco Report for the month of June 2019, donations received were $3,927, fines collected were $232.31, copies made was $870.35. Memorials were zero. Programs held in the library were nine, attended by 108 persons. Story hours held in the library were two, attended by 100 persons. The year-end statistical report for 2018-2019, where it is followed, donations received were $12,801.5, fines collected were $1,939.20, copies made were $7,620.74, memorials received were $650, a total of $23,011.4. That's a lot, Ms. Abada.
Thank you. Mr. Chavez?
Yes, I do. Myself and Mayor Pro Tem Schuster met with the Water Board on July 18th. We considered and approved the financial end of the fiscal year budget and resolutions, which included transfer of the franchise fee to the city of $260-some thousand, which we really thank the Water Board for. Approved the hospital lift station bid, and it was awarded to RMCI. Lake Maloya remains at two inches below spillway. The water crews repaired a major break that was caused by a cable installation, and they worked through the night to restore the service by the next morning. The filter plant had shut down for 24 hours, and we ran water off of the tanks, and they completed that within one, by midnight that night, so we're back online there. We met on closed session to review applications for the new water general manager. Do you have anything to add to that?
No. Good job.
The Financial Advisory Committee met on July 18th also, and we approved the financial report to be presented, presented to the City Commission tonight. That's all I have on reports.
Thank you, Mr. Chavez.
May I interrupt?
Sure.
If you guys want to leave and don't want to sit here through holidays, you don't have to.
That's what I was just saying. We're trying to get out of town, but if you don't want to.
Feel free.
Yeah.
Feel free.
Go pack. It's nice to have an audience, but yeah.
Mayor Pro Tim.
All right. I'm going to back into it. I was at the Water Board with Commissioner Chavez on the 18th, and on the 23rd, which is today, the Housing Authority Board met, and they finally were able to get their audit completed, which was due in December. So, that's been a long time coming and a long struggle, but they have not too many findings, so they're doing, they did pretty well, aside from it being so late. They're working on bathroom remodelings and roof repairs. And their summer food program will wrap up about the middle of August, and it's been going well. They've served several lunches in the communities of Simron, Springer, Maxwell, and Raton, so they've done well there. July 8th, the Chamber Board met. I wasn't able to attend as I was out of town, but I will just mention that they have come to, Mayor Scotta and myself, with, as the commission liaisons, with a list of concerns, and we are meeting with them and addressing those, working to address those concerns with them. We do appreciate their hard work. We know they've worked really hard. The Center for Community Innovation has had a quiet month, although not without a lot of work. Regarding the kitchen, community kitchen, they're working hard at trying to find a better way to deal with the insurance for those who want to use the kitchen, so that they can lower that cost for them. So, that's, that's been kind of a big battle. It can kind of totally delete any profit anybody makes by having to pay that insurance. So, that's one of the main things they're working on, as well as other work. And I know that staff has helped with Main Street. They were busy with the balloon rally and Run to Raton, so they've been just plain busy. And that's all I have.
All righty, thank you. Just to touch on some of the things, attended the RPS meeting last night with Commissioner Jacomo, although I was a little late getting there, we did catch the gist of it. Appreciate him and his report touching on some of the stuff Commissioner Chatterley said about the seniors. The AAA has pretty much assured us that there will be money available this first quarter. It looks pretty good. And also, it was reported that 2020, the governor has said in an edict that it's going to be the year of the seniors. She's going to try and focus on senior programs in 2020, so we're looking forward to that. In fact, we will be having a meeting with Agent Long Term, some of the providers, and the governor on August 13th to discuss that. And like Commissioner Chatterley said, we're trying to create, get the boomers in there, the age 60 to 67. And part of the problem is, is because it's called a Raton Senior Center, and that's the problem throughout the country, is people don't feel like they're seniors at 60. You still feel pretty young. So, some of the things we're kicking around is possibly an American Idol night, where we'll do some karaoke, have some judges, and have some fun, see if we can draw some crowds in. We're going to open that up to the county, anyone age 60 and over. New Mexico Municipal League Annual Conference, the last week of August in Las Cruces. I urge any of the commissioners that are going to get your registrations in. That usually fills up pretty fast. And then Mr. Barry and I participated in a phone conference with the New Mexico Workforce Initiative. Is that what it was? And basically, it was an organizational meeting, more than anything, to try and get some directors in that, and to make sure all communities were involved. And that's all I have. All righty. Going through that, we'll move on to Item 7A, Approval of the July 9th, 2019 Regular Commission Meeting Minutes. All been in your packet. If you've had time to review.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from July 9th.
Second. You have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from July 9th. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item B, Public Hearing, Deliberate An Act on Resolution 2019-35, Rezone Request by City Manager to Amend the Zoning Designation from Mobile Home Subdivision, MHS, to R5 Residential District for Attractive Land Described as Lots 17 through 20, Block 16 of Fairview Edition, consisting of 3.7 acres more or less. Parcel is owned by Mark Peña, the resolutionary owner. Previous was postponed, so this is, we are addressing this, it was postponed from the meeting of 6/25/19. Mr. Barry?
Mayor, Commissioner, in advance of the public hearing, and I would say that I think we have a couple of interested parties that would like to address the commission tonight on this item, I'll just give you some basic information. And you remember that we did talk about this proposal about a year ago at the commission meeting, and the commission ultimately decided to send this particular item back to planning and zoning for reconsideration. And the issue at that time was there was a prospective property owner, and it's Mr. Peña, that attended the commission meeting last year, and stated that he was interested in the purchase of the property. And Mr. Peña really did not have a chance to make his thoughts known at planning and zoning. So, in fairness, this was assigned back to planning and zoning, and planning and zoning has met twice regarding the issue, and has conducted a public hearing at their meeting, and they have a recommendation for you, which I'll cover. The issue at hand is that the tract of land owned by Mr. Peña has lots 17, 18, 19, and 20, on Block 16 of the Fairview Edition in the city of Raton. That's a tract of land that's located on Woodrow Avenue and then between Market Street and Arnold Street. And commissioners, you should have a map that is a section of our city zoning map in your packet. Pass that down to Commissioner Chatterley. And what you'll see is that that tract of land is owned Mobile Home Subdivision currently. Then you see an area that is zoned R5, generally to the north and the east of the Mobile Home Subdivision. You see an area in pink, which is outside the city limits. That is in the county, so it does not show up on our city zoning map, but it is zoned, rural holding zone. The C3 zone that you see is a tract that has historically been a commercial site. I think Webster Oil, King Energy have had business locations there, and there's an active business location there now. And then C4 is the racetrack, and that's a commercial zone that is specific to the type of business that utilizes livestock. So, that's the only C4 zone, I believe, that we have. Well, the new racetrack site as well, so I guess there's two. We explained a year ago that we had looked for an opportunity to clean up spot zoning that existed on the city zoning map. Those spot zones exist in conflict with the city's comprehensive plan. Spot zones are generally an undesirable thing. We don't want custom zoning of certain tracks, but this Mobile Home Subdivision predated the zoning. It was a use there, actually, it was used as a mobile home park, I think, back in the day when the racetrack was operating, and had been there for a number of decades. That use had ceased, and as we say in our memo, I think that was more than 10 years ago, that that, that usage had ceased. The owners at that time had basically walked away from the property. The city went on and cleaned up the property, took efforts to resolve the issues. There were a lot of issues with that mobile home park at the time, and the lot has been vacant since then. When we started the proposal to the planning and zoning in the City Commission to eliminate the spot zone, we asked that it be rezoned to R5, consistent with the surrounding area. And we had stated that the property owner of record at that time really did not have interest in developing the property, took no responsibility for property, did not do property maintenance. And so, between that time and this time, the property has changed hands to Mr. Peña, who is in attendance here tonight, and I believe would like to address the commission. So, this is not an isolated instance. You remember last year, we had a light industrial zone that was surrounded by commercial areas. That light industrial use had also ceased a number of years before, and that was zoned to C3, consistent with our comprehensive plan. So, we would look for these opportunities to clean up those spot zones, and it would be at a time when that non-conforming usage has ceased. It's, it's not ongoing. It's not grandfathered in. And these are a couple of opportunities to do that, where the usage has ceased. The Planning and Zoning Commission has met on this recently, and they have recommended unanimously to rezone this tract to R5. And I will hold up there. Mayor and Commissioner, answer any questions. We do have Chief Espinoza, who has been involved in this with the planning and zoning. Also, we have Dusty Russell. He is the City Planning and Zoning and Code Enforcement Officer. Dusty, welcome to the team. And they are available also to answer any questions that you have.
Hey, are there any questions for Mr. Barry, or the chief, or the zoning officer? Okay, being that this is a public hearing, we will now stand to hear from anyone wishing to address this issue. Mr. Peña, would you like to address this?
Well, I purchased this property about a year ago, almost a year ago, not quite. And there was a property two blocks from where I purchased this property, and they, it was for residence. It was about the same acreage, but for residential area. It was for sale for $15,000, but I didn't want to buy a neighborhood. I wanted to, I wanted a trailer court, and I wanted a trailer court for the specific purpose of making a small community for senior citizens, for the elderly. And I'm willing to compromise with all of the neighbors there and try to please everyone. My thoughts were to put brand-new mobile homes along Woodrow Street, make it look exactly like what's on the opposite side of the street. But if you allow this to remain zoned as a mobile home park, I can put a swimming pool in a little small community building where the seniors can meet and have different activities. If it's just zoned as a neighborhood, I don't believe that, I think it'd put the kibosh on me doing some of these things that I want to do. The property value right now is evaluated at $170,000. Now, if, it was for sale for $88,000 when I got it. Like I said, if this turns into a residential neighborhood, it's worth $15,000. So, you know, I drove a semi truck for 20 years, and quite a bit of my earnings have gone into this little project. And before I purchased the property, I went in, I went into the fire station, I said, "Is this, is this, is this a mobile home park code?" And he said, "Yes, it is." And I said, "Well, that's wonderful." And then he got to talking a little while to me, and he says, "What's your plans?" Then he said, "You know, I have a cousin right down the street that wouldn't like that. That's not a good idea." He says, "Well, I think we need, you need to pay $300 and go before the board here and have this evaluated." And I said, "I said, 'Show me on the map where your uncle lives.'" So, he showed me on the map where his uncle lives, and it's outside the city. I said, "This guy's kind of far away, and you haven't even talked with your uncle. You don't know if he's for or against." And by the way, I did talk to all the neighbors in the area. None of them seemed to care, one way or the other. As a matter of fact, on the radio, I heard several appeals for people that might oppose my idea to show up and, you know, voice their opinion. Four or five meetings have gone by. Not one person I know of, except to mention this of fireman's uncle, which he didn't even really know whether he was opposed to it or not. I just don't want to lose some money, because I work kind of hard for that money, and I've, the property was a mess, it's just in shambles. And I went, I bought a trailer, and I bought a tractor, and I've cleaned up that huge mess at least six times, and people have dumped in there again. But it's, 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 it has a lot of trees and shrubbery that kind of blocks the view of how bad the mess is. And whatever I do there, whether it's houses or mobile home park, I intend to leave the trees there, so people don't see a bad view. And like I say, I want to please everybody and make everybody as happy as possible. I just would like an opportunity to see if I can bring 20 or 30 senior citizens into the area to spend money and be happy there. If it ever becomes a casino again right there, boy, they'd really be happy, and I, you know, I don't think that's going to happen. I believe they're going to put a wildlife refuge- I believe they're going to put a wildlife refuge right there. At the Planning and Zoning Committee that I went to a month ago or so, there was a huge crowd of people just really against them putting up a quarry, a rock quarry. I mean, they was yelling and screaming at all the people on the committee, and I thought there was going to be a riot there, it was so bad. And then when my turn to talk came up, everybody left, because nobody really cared too much about this mobile home park deal that was right next to the track. Anyhow, the crowd scorned the board, and just at the last minute, the man who was going to build a quarry said, "Hey, I don't have to have a quarry. I'll just sell it to this woman who wants to turn it into a wildlife reserve. She's got the money, we'll just go ahead and sell it to her." So that ended the whole matter, but I think there could have been a riot there, those things were going pretty south. Anyway, that's all I have to say.
All righty. One question I've got for you. Do you have a timeline, plans?
I think I could get it all together in two or three years if everything goes smoothly. I do help senior citizens, that is my main job now. So if everything goes right, I think two or three years. And like I said, if there's anything that makes anybody unhappy anywhere, I can change it. And I want to make it look just like a regular neighborhood, but in the backside, I want to be able to put some amenities that would make these senior citizens happy. My mother is a senior citizen. She's 85, and a big part of this is to help her and to please her, find friends for her to make it...she loved to RV for many years and go to the many different RV parks, and they're great communities. People really have a lot of fun. They enjoy each other's company.
Okay. Let me ask Mr. Barry a question. Mr. Penya is talking about a mobile home park. Is that the same as this MHS?
It is not. They are two separate zones under the present zoning, Mobile Home Subdivision. A mobile home park would not be allowed. That would be an individually owned, one principal structure per lot under Mobile Home Subdivision. It would just allow...I'm simply perplexed on that, but it is not zoned mobile home park. That was a use at one time on the property, but the zoning is Mobile Home Subdivision.
What I thought.
I did make one more point I just thought of. The man who owned the property 10 years ago and was running that mobile home park, he was crippled, and he was an uncaring-type person. So he let everything run amok. And so that was a big reason for some of the problems that were there.
Any questions for Mr. Penya or Mr. Barry?
I do have one question on the zoning. Does a mobile home subdivision allow for any other amenities like he's describing, or is it just simply for, like, the way that it's currently zoned as a subdivision?
Commissioner, bear with me for a minute, and I have something out of the zoning code. So I'll read from the zoning code. This is 156.075 of our zoning code. And permitted uses in structures include mobile home units and single-family dwellings. And permitted accessory uses in structures include uses in structures which are customarily accessory and clearly incidental and subordinate to permitted or permissible use in structures do not involve the conduct of business on premises, accept home occupations, and are located on the same lots as the permitted use or structures or in a contiguous lot in same ownership. That is the description of MHS's zoning.
So as it stands right now, Mr. Penya could not even put in a mobile home park as he's described.
I think that Mr. Penya may be anticipating a request for rezoning to mobile home park under the use that he's describing. That would be an action that would be required.
This doesn't look that big to me. How many?
I think it's 3.6 acres.
The city zoning, they rejected the proposal to keep it as a mobile home park, right?
That's correct. The proposal is that the city of Rattown is requesting that we rezone the tract to R5, and the Planning and Zoning did vote to recommend to the City Commission, their actions of recommendation, to rezone the tract to R5. And you have the description of an R5 there that describes the allowable uses.
So it looks to me like there are other multiple-family dwellings that would be allowed, townhouses. Is that true?
Well, you do see an R5, and that is for an apartment building that exists on that piece.
Sorry, I was.
And that's a couple of blocks away from the site.
Right.
Any other further questions? Any further comments from the public?
Mr. Mayor, I think we do have one other gentleman that would like to address the commission.
I just want to say one more quick thing. There are only four mobile homes right across the street from this property. There's actually, there's one modular home and two mobile homes in a vacant lot. That's, you know...
Anyone else want to address?
Hello, everyone. Good evening.
Evening.
I'm Jose Morizolimos. I live on 1430 Market Street, which is right around the property that is being discussed. And I am totally in favor of the city in turning that into an R5 zoning. I barely lived through the last mobile home park that we had there before. It was just a total disaster, and I think that such activity would do nothing but degenerate and create a much lower cost than the rest of the properties surrounding the areas. And I'm sorry, Mr. Penya, I live right across the street, but I don't ever remember talking to you about that issue. The only way I found out was the note that the city had placed on the property for us to come and voice our opinion. So I do not believe that that would be a good idea to let another facility like that go in place. That's all I have to say.
Do you live down the block or right across the street?
I live pretty much right across the street.
Pretty much. How many houses?
Mr. Penya, we have a process here. We can, we'll address the questions. If you have questions, you can present it to us.
Well, the Planning Commission, they made a big deal out of the 100-foot rule. They said anybody that wasn't 100 foot from a property really shouldn't have a say-so. And I want to just add one more thing. When all those people purchased those properties there, they knew there was a mobile home park there, and they still purchased those properties.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, do you have any further comments?
I'm available to answer any questions. The staff is available. I have nothing to add to that, but we stand by to answer questions.
Chief?
Mayor and Commissioners, we did send out letters, and we received only one comment back, and that was from Mr. Penya. And then that was pretty much it. That's all we received back. And we did send out letters within 100 feet of the property owner.
All righty. Thank you, Chief. There's no further discussion, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 201935, rezoning request by the city manager to amend the zoning designation from Mobile Home Subdivision to R5 Residential District.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the recommendation from the zoning commission to amend from Mobile Home Subdivision to R5 Residential District for the tract of land as described. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item C, deliberate enact on celebration permit applications for Gate City Music Festival alcohol vendors. Mr. Barry?
Mayor and Commissioner, we do have Brenda Ferry present here representing Main Street, the primary organizers of Gate City Music Festival. This is an event that we have had now for a number of years, and I think it's become an event that we look forward to on Labor Day every year. We've had some great musical acts come in, and certainly I would say a great event. I would like to point out that some years ago, the city had challenged every one of our community partners to build some events for the good of Rattown, and Main Street stepped up, put a lot of effort into this particular event as well as other events. And we'd like to thank Rattown Main Street for their thank you to city employees. They hosted a cookout in the parking lot for city employees, and I think it's kind of a mutual thank you because we had a very successful 4th of July, all the activities that took place there. Great teamwork on that. The Run to Rattown, I think, again, really thank the organizers of that. That makes our job easier and is really good for town, and we're happy that we can play a little part in that. And we look forward to a very successful music festival again this year. But Brenda is on hand to talk about the event. Brenna, if you want to come forward and...
Before you start, Brenda, I'd like to thank you very much for the seven brats I ate that night.
You're so welcome. Mayor, Commissioners, we're gearing up for the fifth annual, fifth annual already. But I think, that being said, with all of the great events that are in Rattown, Run to Rattown, the 4th of July events, and the Gate City Music Festival, we are becoming a destination, and that was our goal. And we're getting there, so it's very exciting. So the alcohol permits are just something to make the event a little bit for everybody. We also have a kids' zone this year, a full kids' zone, so it's family-friendly all the way around. So this year, there are three breweries and one distillery that we're asking you to approve tonight. Colfax Ale Cellar, Blue Dragonfly Brewing Company, Palmer Brewery, and Left Turn Distillery.
Are there any questions for Brenda or Mr. Barry?
I'll make a motion to approve.
A second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the permit applications for the Gate City Music Fest. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you, Brenda.
Thank you all.
Item D, deliberate enact on dispatch agreement between the city of Rattown and Colfax County. Mr. Barry?
Mayor and Commissioner, we have a number of agreements with agencies in northeastern New Mexico to provide dispatch services from our emergency dispatch center here in City Hall. That, to meet the terms of that agreement, requires that we periodically update the equipment, that we train personnel. Of course, that is a 24/7 service, and so it's very challenging to provide those. But that's an arrangement that I think has worked well for city of Rattown and for all of the surrounding agencies over a long period of time. Now, with the dispatch agreement between the city of Rattown and Colfax County, we see one of our larger-volume uses under Colfax County. And so we try to include terms in the agreement that include a sharing of the cost that is based on the volume of calls with each particular entity. And of course, the city of Rattown, RPD and RFD, they're, I think, the largest volumes. But Colfax County is a large volume as well. So we have not brought to you a change in this amount. You can see the annual sum of $49,062 for dispatch services for Colfax County. That is unchanged. However, I would state that upon your consideration of this, we would try to work with Colfax County and probably build in a cost of living increase into that. Our costs, of course, go up every year. If nothing else, then the labor costs, we have a built-in increase in that annually. And so I think that we would propose, because of the volume here, that we have a nominal increase in future years. But we are recommending for this term that we would maintain the existing cost.
Okay. Any questions or comments for Mr. Barry? I have one. Mr. Barry, would we try to incorporate that with all of our agreements with all of our communities?
We would evaluate that volume of business and try to adjust that accordingly. But it's true of all of the entities that the costs of running a dispatch center, they trend up every year. Not only are wages and salaries increasing, but all of the related personnel costs, like health insurance, all of those costs go up every year. So I think that we are forced to look at that, yes.
Okay. Any other comments, questions?
Make a motion to approve dispatch agreement between the city of Rattown and Colfax County.
A second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the dispatch agreement between the city of Rattown and Colfax County. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item E, deliberate enact on school resource officer memorandum of understanding between the city of Rattown and Rattown Public Schools. Mr. Barry?
Mayor and Commissioner, this is an agreement where a city of Rattown officer will serve as a school resource officer, and it's an arrangement that we have had with Rattown Public Schools for the past two years, and we bring this back to you for a third year. Now, under this arrangement, we are using grant funds from a federal program, the COPS Grant, and we are in the last year of a three-year agreement to receive those grant funds. I would say that the school resource officer program has been very successful. I think it's mutually beneficial for city of Rattown and Rattown Public Schools. If we don't have the SRO in schools, we send an officer up there quite a bit anyway. So I think that there's a lot of benefit to this program. We would like to seek additional grant funds to continue the program. And as you see in the MOU, there are matching funds required. And so the matching funds have been required each of the past two years, and then this year again. And you'll remember that two years ago, when we got the position staffed and we were initiating this program, the schools had an issue with their finances, and the City Commission agreed to provide the entire match. And so that was done, and we initiated this successful program. Officer Hightree has filled that role for the last two years. And then last year in the MOU, we agreed to split the costs of the matching funds with the school. And then this year, Rattown Public Schools has agreed to fund all of the match, and there would be no matching funds provided by the city of Rattown under this MOU.
Any questions for Mr. Barry?
I will approve the school resource officer memorandum of understanding between the city of Rattown and Rattown Public Schools.
A second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the school resource officer MOU between the city of Rattown and Rattown Public Schools. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item F, deliberate enact on ground lease agreement between the city of Rattown and Charles Sheldon for a lot located at Rattown Municipal Cruise School Airport. Mr. Barry?
Mayor and Commissioner, what a ground lease agreement Rattown Municipal Airport is, is an agreement between the city of Rattown and an aircraft owner who wishes to construct a hangar on the grounds of... a hangar on the grounds of Rattone's municipal airport. This is a standard agreement that we have with a number of other aircraft owners. There are a number of, I don't have the exact number in front of me, but a number of existing hangars. Mr. Sheldon has approached us and stated that he would really like to house his aircraft at Rattone Airport. He was very impressed with the fixed base operator and the general operation at Rattone Airport, the recent construction we've had on the airport. And he is a resident of Rainsville, New Mexico, but he would like to build a hangar and shelter his aircraft at Rattone Airport. The agreement also includes Viola Alaman. That is, they are husband and wife. So they would propose to build a hangar 44 feet by 40 feet that has a consistent architectural design with the existing hangars. I believe upon your agreement to the ground lease agreement, Mr. Sheldon would order the building and commence construction. So I would recommend approval of the ground lease agreement. You can see that we would build this in the second row of hangars. The first row of hangars is full. There is one hangar presently. It takes up about two and a half lots. So we've included Lot D in the description. I do have a Google Earth photo and I can tell you that we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight current hangars. This would be the ninth hangar. All of the previous hangars have a similar agreement, if not the same agreement. You see a modest rent is collected that accelerates over time. And the agreement is for a 50-year term. Now, the city of Rattone would always own the piece of property. The aircraft owner would own the structure. He would be free to lease the structure, sell the structure, use it, but only for aviation purposes. No other purpose other than an aviation use, which is listed in the agreement.
Alrighty, thank you.
Thank you.
Comments, questions?
I'll make a motion to approve the ground lease agreement between the city of Rattone and Charles Sheldon for a lot located at Rattone Municipal Cruzfield Airport.
A second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the ground lease agreement between Mr. Sheldon and Ms. Alaman and the city of Rattone. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item G, deliberate enact on memorandum of understanding between the city of Rattone and the Schuler Restoration Corporation, Inc. Mr. Berry?
Mayor Commission, I believe it was back in 2015, the city of Rattone had issued a request for proposals for management services for the Schuler Theater. The commission did award an agreement to the Schuler Restoration Corporation Incorporated, Schuler Restoration. And we entered into agreement in 2015. The terms of that agreement had a number of annual renewals. And we have since run out of term on that. That agreement has expired. So I have brought you an updated memorandum of agreement for your consideration. The difference in this agreement, this agreement would include provisions for something that we didn't anticipate back then, and that would be a sublease. So since that time, we have developed the digital film operation, which is operated by the L. Rattone in partnership with Schuler Restoration Corporation. Additionally, we have a potential sublease with KRTN. They would like to broadcast their morning show from a portion of the Schuler Theater that has sat unused. And so this agreement would make a provision for a sublease. And you'll see that it makes a provision for a for-profit sublease. And so a for-profit company that would sublease, like KRTN, would have to pay certain costs. So while we agreed to provide, let's say, electrical and other utilities to the building for the Schuler use, for those uses that have a public benefit, the sublease that's for-profit without a direct public benefit would pay those utility costs. And so that's reflected in the MOU, or the MOA, excuse me.
Alrighty. Any comments, questions for Mr. Berry?
I would just add that Mike Kowalski is here representing Schuler Restoration. I think it's been a successful partnership. The management is going well. At the time that we issued the RFP, we had no other proposals, no other interest in managing the Schuler. But I think it's gone really well. Mr. Kowalski can answer any questions or he can give his perspective to the commission as a matter of fact.
Mike, would you like to say anything or...
No. Only that, that I would second the attitude that it's been a success. It's hard work. It's an old lady.
She is.
But we have enthusiasm that continues and is addressed by the MOA. No problems from our standpoint with what Scott has proposed.
Cool. Thank you.
But if you have a question, I can try to answer that.
Any questions or, Mike? I remember where my conversation was. It was last night at the RPS meeting, no? Yeah.
I would add one thing, Mayor. The Schuler Restoration Board did give me two comments. And so there may be some versions of the MOA floating around out there. You have a revised copy that was just revised prior to the meeting and it contains a couple of terms. One thing is that the manager would collect a dollar per ticket from the digital film use and remit that to the city. So whatever else the charges are, the city would collect $1 per ticket for digital film use. The other uses, meaning live stage uses, would follow the existing revenue sharing schedule that is in the Schuler Auditorium Use Agreement. And then lastly, on merchandise that's sold by a vendor, the city would collect 15% of that. That's in the agreement.
Alrighty, thank you.
Those were last-minute revisions.
I will move to approve the memorandum of agreement between the city of Rattone and the Schuler Restoration Corporation, Inc.
A second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the MOA between the city of Rattone and the Schuler Restoration Corporation, Inc. Is there any further comments? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Good decision.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
And Ms. Chavez, now you know. I guess we do make a little money on the Schuler. Alright. Item H, deliberate enact on memorandum of understanding between the city of Rattone and the Juvenile Justice Continuum Advisory Board. Mr. Berry?
Mayor Commission, this is territory for the city clerk, so I will let her address that. I probably can't help her with that, so she'll have to do both.
Mayor Commission, this is the memorandum that we do annually. We have received the fully executed contracts for this fiscal year to operate this program, which we do through subcontractors. HRDA is our subcontractor for the boys and girls services. And then we also have Emma Green, Peace through Education, is our subcontractor for the restorative justice piece of this grant. It's pretty much the same MOU as last year, but it does reference our new grant agreement number and spells out the responsibilities of the parties of the, we refer to it as the Rattone Continuum Advisory Board. And so they're the board that oversees the programs. We also employ a juvenile justice coordinator, that's Danielle Archileta. And she's done a wonderful job with this program for the last four or five years. And I think that the program's in a good place and that's thanks to Danielle. So I hear there's going to be some changes in the future. We'll be going to the grant writing seminar, I guess, in September for the next cycle of grant funding. I believe it'll become either a two-year or a four-year contract, which would actually be nice.
Yeah, it would be.
So for this year, I would just recommend approval that we continue with this memorandum of understanding between the city and the continuum advisory board.
Alrighty, are there any questions for Michael Ann or Mr. Berry?
I'll make a motion to approve the MOU between the city of Rattone and the Juvenile Justice Continuum Advisory Board.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the MOU between the city of Rattone and the Juvenile Justice Continuum Advisory Board. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item I, deliberate enact on appointment of 2019 voting delegate and alternate for New Mexico Municipal League Annual State Conference. Mr. Berry?
Mayor Commission, this is in regard to the annual conference that will be held in Las Cruces. And I have the dates here. I thought I had the dates. This delegate will vote at the annual business meeting to be held on Thursday, August 29th. And the business there would be the election of president-elect, vice president, treasurer, and three directors-at-large for a two-year term. Also, the annual statement of municipal policy, the annual resolutions and amendments to the New Mexico Municipal League bylaws will be voted on at that meeting. And so generally, an elected official from a member, which the city of Rattone is a member, would cast this vote. It would be somebody who is in attendance at the Las Cruces Conference. So we could talk about who plans to attend the conference. It makes good sense to also appoint an alternate in case the voting delegate has an issue when that comes up. We will have an alternate ready to go to fill in. That's a pretty good trip to commit to go to Las Cruces and attend this conference. However, there are some important issues that will be considered. Now, Mayor, you will be, I understand, unopposed in running for president-elect.
That's correct.
Correct. And so I think that the mayor would be out of consideration as a voting delegate.
Yeah, I probably wouldn't go very well, yeah.
And so I think that between the remaining four commissioners, we would have a conversation now about who will be able to attend, who would be able to act as voting delegate, who might be an alternate. And I guess if we couldn't work that out, there may be a possibility of a staff person doing it. But I think that they would definitely prefer the elected officials.
Yeah, you can appoint a staff if no other officials go in.
Well, I do plan on attending. And I looked at the dates there. You have it pretty well. It's the 28th through the 30th.
And I will be attending as well, as I previously mentioned.
Yeah.
I'll be out of town. I won't be able to go.
You'll be out of town, but not in Las Cruces. Close, but...
Well, we have two folks who would like to, do we take a nomination for voting there or even just a pint, can't we?
Mine.
Or volunteers?
I've been voting delegate before and will happily do it again, but...
And I'd happily be an alternate.
Alright, there we go. Easy enough.
Michael Ann, would you like action from the election on that or is that...
Okay. I'll make a motion to make Lyndy Schuster, Mayor Pro Tim, the voting delegate, and Ms. Chadardly, Commissioner Chadardly, as the alternate.
I have a motion and a second to assign Mayor Pro Tim Schuster as the delegate and Commissioner Chadardly as the alternate. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Cool. Thank you. Item J, deliberate enact on resolution 2019-41, authorizing the assignment of authorized officers and agents for rural infrastructure loan program project RIP 00011. Mr. Berry?
Mayor Commission, I'm going to give you the basic information, but I'm going to let Michael Ann handle the tough stuff on this. So the rural infrastructure program is a program through the New Mexico Environment Department. The city of Rattone had secured funding for our solid waste transfer station some years ago, and we still have some outstanding funds that we will expand the construction of the transfer station. Now, primarily, the funds are built so far on purchase of the pre-engineered steel building package, which we are in possession of. And so under the RIP program, the New Mexico Environment Department had granted $225,000 in grant funds to the city of Rattone. And also, there was a $25,000 loan that we are repaying to the fund. And so we have about $80,000 of that remaining that will go to force construction. And now I'm going to turn it over to Michael Ann.
So you may recall, I think it was two meetings ago, we executed an extension agreement so that we could utilize those funds, the remainder, which was a little over $80,000 for our transfer station project. It was brought to our attention when we sent the agreements in that we didn't have an updated signature card. So that's the reason for the action this evening. They did suggest that I go ahead and designate two individuals so that if the mayor is not available with the city manager, that we have alternates available that can sign these documents, including reimbursement requests. So I'm requesting that we list the mayor and the city manager for loan agreement authorization and other documents. And then for disbursements, myself and my deputy clerk, Robin Osborne, would be listed to be signatories for that piece.
Any comments, questions?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution 2019-41, authorizing the assignment of authorized officers and agents for the rural infrastructure loan program project RIP 0011, as stated in the attachment.
A second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2019-41. Is there any further questions? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item K, deliberate enact on resolution 2019-42, fiscal year 19, end-of-year financial reports for the city of Rattone, Rattone Waterworks, and Rattone Public Service. Mr. Berry?
Mayor Commission, the remaining items on our agenda have to do with the end-of-year financial management issues and then submission of our final budgets for the current fiscal 19, 20 fiscal year. And so Michael Ann will address city of Rattone financial reports. We have Sandy Chavez from Rattone Public Service Company, Dan Campbell from Rattone Waterworks. And they will present their individual pieces of this. And so I'll turn it over to Michael Ann.
Alrighty.
So Mayor Commission, in your packet, we did have the Rattone Waterworks approved financials. RPS did meet last night, so they provided their reports to us as well this afternoon. And then I just provided you our report right before the meeting as well. So the city of Rattone report. So if we look at the city, oh, actually, this is the budget that I just gave you. Sorry, my report was in the packet. We have lots of paper tonight. So anyway, we do have our financial report with our financial summary as kind of our cover. You'll see that the ending cash balance in our general fund as of June 30th was $2... You'll see that the ending cash balance in our general fund as of June 30th was $2,758,193. That exceeded our projection for this year despite us battling declining grocery receipts during the fiscal year. We did, in the fiscal year, 4.3 percent, about 4.35 percent, below our general fund budget projections. But you'll recall that we did receive a larger distribution of small cities assistance this year, so that did give us enough funds to cover the shortfall. Also, we were able to minimize... Sorry, one second. We were able to minimize our departmental expenditures throughout the year, resulting in our general fund revenues exceeding our operating expenses by 11 percent. So that also resulted in a positive net change in our general fund cash at year-end. The only outstanding grant reimbursements at year-end were the juvenile justice grant and the Federal Highways Depot grant. As a result, we will do temporary transfers, or we have done those transfers, at year-end, and we will reimburse those funds to the general fund once those funds have been received from those two grant entities. Also, the financial report, our final budget adjustments, and the final budget must be submitted to DFA by July 31st. After we receive those approvals, this evening, we'll still be working on getting that submitted into the DFA's LGBMS system. So it's kind of like doing two budgets.
Yeah.
I've also provided you with the grocery receipts tax report. So we did receive our first distribution of the fiscal year. This does represent May sales. So we would hope that now that we're in the summer months, that the August, September, October distributions should represent, you know, a busier time with the summer traffic. So I think with the last few events that we've seen, that town's been busy. So interstate has backed up most weekends.
I would just add that we're seeing a moving movement on construction-related activity also. Zoning business is pretty good, something we haven't seen for a number of years. Some private construction going on. We have our water treatment plant project, which is a pretty large project for City of Raton. It's, I think, positive for the construction sector as well.
All righty. Any questions for Michael Ann?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution 2019-42, FY '19, year-end financial reports for City of Raton, Raton Waterworks, and Raton Public Service.
I'll second. Do we need to hear from the others before we...
What I was gonna probably need to hear from...
If you have questions.
Any questions for Ms. Chavez on RPS?
I have none.
Mr. Campbell on Water?
Same thing. If you have any questions, I've answered the Water Works questions already. Why did you have any questions? Let me know.
If not, I have a motion and a second to approve resolution 2019-42. No further discussion? Michael Ann, can we have a roll call vote on this, please?
Commissioner Jackwell?
Yes.
Commissioner Chatterley?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Schuster?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Thank you all for your hard work.
And I'd like to commend everyone for that work, and especially the city budget with being able to control departmental expenses so that it wasn't... It could have been a bad year, and it actually turned out really well.
It did.
Thank you.
I would just add that in all of these end-of-the-year or the item dealing with submission of the final budget, you know, this was a pretty stressful time for the various offices here. And everybody, Michael Ann, RPS, and Water Works have put out a lot of extra effort to meet these schedules and, you know, have done a great job. So just want to acknowledge those efforts.
All right, thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you.
And you guys don't have to stay. I know you're late.
Okay, item L, deliberate enact on resolution 2019-43, fiscal year 19, City of Raton, end-of-year budget adjustment. Michael Ann?
Mayor and Commissioner, in your packet, this is a separate resolution exclusive just for the city's budget adjustment. And we do that mainly just because we have to upload our budget adjustment into the DFA system, where the two utilities do not currently use that system. So I've prepared mine separately from theirs, and then you'll see on the next item, we've combined the approval of their two budget adjustment requests under one action item. Because we do... I don't even remember. I think I was on adjustment number 17. This one, I've just labeled it as the final. But we do do several adjustments throughout the year.
Sure.
There's a benefit to doing that. As you can see, our final end-of-year budget adjustment is quite short, so I think there's a few extra pages attached to the project. But, so yeah, you should just have two pages for our end-of-year budget adjustment. And most of them are just some minor line item adjustments. We do these adjustments so that we won't receive an audit finding if a fund is overspent. You can see that I've identified for you those temporary transfers that I talked about. We did do a temporary transfer to the Aquatics Center during the fiscal year. As we saw the decline in the grocery receipts and also just in revenues in general, we did give them a temporary transfer to help with some of those operational expenses, but, you know, they don't really gear up for the summer until late May or late June, so that doesn't really give them a lot of time to see an increase in revenues. So we'll have to kind of monitor that during the course of the next fiscal year. So I'm going to reverse that adjustment because we're not paying that back to the general fund at the end of the fiscal year. And then we did do the temporary transfers on the depot project and... And then I did have an additional transfer for the rec center in addition to the 20 that we had already transferred, so another 2,000 would be transferred just to cover them for the end of the fiscal year. And then our juvenile justice grant, I've actually already received that reimbursement last week, so we'll be paying that one back to the general fund as well. I am reversing the... We did have a budget line item for the airport hangar because that project did not start in this fiscal year or this past fiscal year. I'm just going to reverse that adjustment. So other than that, I think they're all pretty straightforward. The majority of the ones on the second page, we had a lot of loan activity in the last 30 days of the fiscal year, and so I think that was some of the difficulty I encountered just with our end-of-fiscal-year reports and the budget was kind of how I was going to address the refunding of the two Aquatics Center loans. You'll recall, we did refinance those at a lower interest rate and combined them into one. And then we also had the new sanitation loan as well. So I've created new funds to account for those new loans. Other than that, is there any questions?
Any questions for Michael Ann? All I know is I'm glad it's her and not me.
I know. Yes. I think it was wise to do multiple adjustments through the years. It makes it a lot simpler.
Absolutely. There's no other questions, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved. Resolution 2019-43?
No, second.
Have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2019-43, the final year-end budget adjustment for fiscal year 19. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thanks.
Lindy, a second?
Yes.
Item N, deliberate enact on resolution 2019-44, year-end budget adjustments for Raton Waterworks and Raton Public Service. Do you want to flip a coin? What do we want to do?
Mayor and Commissioner, like I said, we've combined the action to approve the two utilities' budget adjustments. They don't do... They generally just do one probably at the end of the year. It's not very typical to do them throughout the year like we have to do, but... So you do have in your packet one for Raton Waterworks. Dan is available this evening if you have any questions regarding this adjustment. They are requesting an increase in the water and sewer operating expenditures due to the reduction in anticipated expenditures and increase in anticipated revenue.
Questions for Dan? Take a motion. Any question? Okay, go ahead. We have a motion from Mayor Pro Tim Schuster.
I'll second.
And then we have a second. Is there any further discussion, Verdan or Sandy? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item N, deliberate enact on resolution 2019-45, approval of final fiscal year 2020 budgets for City of Raton, Raton Waterworks, and Raton Public Service. Michael Ann?
Mayor and Commissioner, we do present to you this evening all three budgets for the City of Raton, Raton Waterworks, and Raton Public Service. We are seeking approval this evening so that we can meet the deadline of July 31st to get all of this information into them. Sandy, do you want to present any highlights on your budgets? I've provided them the copies that you gave me. Can you bring your copy in? But...
In January, well, I guess it was December, we got word from Tri-State that they had increased our transmission expense by 12 percent. At that time, we did have to do a fuel cost adjustment, increase on... 0.2 percent, I believe, on the bills to overcome that effect. Being that it was halfway through the year with our budget, the budget adjustment does reflect having to increase the revenues to cover the added expense for the Tri-State increase. And we have taken care of that. Hopefully, it doesn't increase any more than what they stated it would. So that, the increase of the 12.5 percent is reflected in this year's transmission and distribution expenses above the transmission services. The three, the 500... You will see that we budgeted last year $480,000, and we've increased it to $585,000 this year. And that should take care of the...
12 percent.
Yeah, the 12 and a half percent. Otherwise, that's basically the only major impact that we have on our budget. If anybody has any questions?
Any questions?
We did reflect a 1.5 percent wage increase across the board, except for our apprentice linemen. They're in an apprentice program, and they have step increases throughout the year, which are also reflected in here.
Okay. Any comments, questions? All righty, thank you, Sandy.
Thank you.
Dan, did you want to highlight anything?
Mayor and Commissioner, this does include the modest rate increase that y'all included. That will be in this. Actually, it starts on your July bill. It also includes a substantial project that actually will affect the capital improvement funds, where that fund is maximized on the wastewater side. We will do a lift station project, as was reported earlier, and replace some 1967 infrastructure. The lift station will be replaced. That project should start within the next 60 days. The bid at winter was actually the same contract that's doing the water treatment plant. We'll be doing that. There is the one change in here. The positions will stay the same as far as our staffing level. As always, any operator that passes their test does get that increase immediately. There is an overlap in there of my replacement and I probably working side by side for three to four months. That's the goal, finding the right individual, because my time will end by the end of this fiscal year, so this will be my last budget. Any questions?
Yeah. Any questions for Mr. Campbell?
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
And Mayor and Commissioner, I didn't give you your budget binders this evening, but I will. So I have one complete budget prepared, and then I've provided each of you with our budget recap and the charts for the general fund revenues and expenditures, also a chart comparison of our grocery receipts. And then I did prepare a brief summary of any changes that we made in the general fund from our interim budget to our finals. So you will see that we did receive a residual payment from Raton Waterworks that was not in the interim budget. So we will be utilizing those funds for non-recurring expenses. DFA would not allow us to use that revenue source for staffing needs because it's not an ongoing revenue source. So we have budgeted in this year's budget for a police vehicle, public works truck. We're looking at server upgrades, an LED lighting upgrade project here at City Hall, and also a garage door replacement at the warehouse. So those are the type of non-recurring expenses that we'll utilize those funds for. But I've also noted for you on here a few other adjustments that I made. I did feel that I kind of had overstated the ambulance revenues slightly, so I've made a small adjustment there. We did see a slight increase in the franchise tax this year, and that was on the water side. So I've accounted for that increase in the budget. And then also, I think I kind of over-budgeted the small cities assistance as well, so I've reduced that revenue as well. Because that one's kind of a wild part. I never quite know. And I think I budgeted it at like $400,000, so I think I was a little over-optimistic.
We'll take it.
We'll see where we end up this year with that.
All right.
Other than that, the city manager did ask me to include some funding for some projects. If you want to discuss those, I did put the underpass painting and some projects in there.
Yes, we will talk about a couple of things. The lighting project that Michael Ann had brought up would be to replace these fluorescent fixtures. You see, we have a lot of these throughout City Hall and at the RPS building. This is an energy efficiency project, so if we replace those with LED, we think we'll realize, you know, savings on energy, which the ratepayers of RPS directly pay for this use. And so we had talked about maybe a renewable project, you know, adding solar or looking at something like that. But just equally as important is energy conservation. And so that's something that we can do. Certainly, we got our issues with these. We got our life out of those, so we're working with utilities as far as getting that done. I have brought up with Michael Ann, there are a couple of special projects that we would like to accomplish, and we would look at various forms of funding these, but one of those would be painting on the South Underpass. We would look at the North Underpass as well with that. We would look at the North Underpass as well with that. I think that's a bigger project, and we might pursue some grant funds to do something there. But it's several things that would address the comment that we've heard in a lot of public meetings, that we need to improve the appearance of our town. So there are a number of little projects that we're looking at. That's one that hasn't been done for a number of years, so we'll, we'll look at doing that. We've got some instances of illegal dumping in areas which are hard to control. We'll look at some fencing to try to control that. That would be a general fund expense. We have talked about our infrastructure, our information technology upgrades here. I think that we would look at phones as well. And we have brought up with you that maintaining the old phone system that we have carries a pretty high price monthly and, and does not provide the best service to the public or to the staff. So there's a number of those things that during the year we'll try to accomplish. We'll, we'll try to do, as we said, using various funding. We've got some roofing projects anticipated. Those would be in cooperation with self-insurers fund in response to a hailstorm, which now was two years ago, but we still have four buildings that have not been re-roofed. And so that's self-insure funds contractor. We'll do that. RPS is looking at a separate contract for re-roofing the generation plant. That's a large building, large roof, lot of square feet, leaky needs done, so another one of those special projects that we've got going. So we have a number of those that we'll talk about and report back to the commission as we get into this fiscal year.
Okay. Any other questions or comments for Michael Ann or any of the participants? Entertain a motion. Did we have that already?
I make a motion.
Okay, we have a motion?
Resolution 2019-42.
Okay.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second for Resolution, to adopt Resolution 2019-45, the 2019-2020 municipal budget adoption for the 108th fiscal year. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. And Michael Ann, we need to sign this after this evening?
Yes, I have the originals, so everybody can sign those this evening.
We can do that. Item O, city manager's report. Mr. Barry?
Mr. Mayor, before we go into that, I'd like to, for all of us to commend Michael Ann. She's been working here for 30 straight hours. She's at midnight, she's on the weekends, so I think we appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Absolutely. Your staff as well, all your help. Sandy, you guys, appreciate all the work.
Fortunately, there's just certain times of year that, you know, deadline's a deadline, and so we do what we got to do to get it done.
I'll pass that on to staff when we can.
Appreciate it. Appreciate it all. Okay, Mr. Barry, it's yours.
Mayor, tomorrow morning, I will travel to Las Vegas and attend the meeting of the Northeast Regional Transportation Planning Organization. We would try to continue that conversation with Mexico DOT and the district engineer in regard to the issue that we discussed last time on the traffic issues on I-25 and the Clayton Road. I met with the county yesterday. We have talked about, in general, working together to bring this to the attention of the DOT, to move that project up in their plans and try to resolve that issue. And so we'll work with the county going forward. Contacting the district engineer is the first step, I think, following the chain of command. We would inform the district engineer. And of course, throughout DOT, everybody really is new with changes in administration. And so the district engineer is new to District 4. But we look for that contact, try to build a relationship with the district engineer. Then after that, I think we would try to approach the Cabinet Secretary of DOT and have the same kind of presentation to him, and then ultimately go to the Transportation Commission at their meeting in Las Vegas in November and make a presentation to that group. To make sure that everybody knows that this is an issue on I-25 at the entrance to New Mexico, and try to move them along as far as resolving that issue. And I'll report back to you on that contact. I have met with each of our community organization partners and given them an update to the progress that we've talked about on the Economic Development Plan. We currently are working on a structured format, which we want to then bring to the commission and keep the conversation going in regard to this item over the next couple of meetings. So I'll be reporting back to you on that. Myself, Public Works Director, and Mr. Campbell met with Century Link yesterday. One comment that we've heard a number of places is that Raton really needs to look at ways to upgrade our broadband capability, our fiber assets in town. Century Link stated that they have a number of smaller projects going, but they did go over and review with us a bigger project that they're planning, where they would build some new fiber, both underground and overhead, from downtown Raton to State Highway 72 going east. And so that would be a pretty significant upgrade, and they had mentioned that they're really targeting this upgrade of broadband capability in Raton, so I think that's a positive thing. Of course, we want to coordinate that, work with them to make sure that that fits in with infrastructure plans that we've got, existing utilities, those kind of things. So we're doing that as well. I would remind the commission and the public that we are accepting comments on the Infrastructure Capital Improvement Plan. We would have to bring that back and finalize that here in August for a September submittal. And last time, we had talked about the importance of the ICIP as far as setting our priorities for funding opportunities such as capital outlay through the legislature. So anybody that has some input on what our priorities for capital improvements should be, they can get those to us in really any form of communications. Phone call, letter, attend one of our commission meetings, however they would like to do that. We would like to receive that input. And that's all I have, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Any comments from Commissioner Chatterley, Jacobo Chavez, Mayor Protim? One thing I forgot to mention, I will not be at the meeting on August 13th. I have, that's the tentative setup meeting with the governor. And we didn't discuss about possibly moving the last meeting since we, a lot of us will be traveling to Las Cruces on that day. Is that something that maybe we need to consider and talk about maybe next meeting?
I think that we would want to talk about that at our first meeting in August because there may be some, some actions shaping up where we would need to conduct that meeting, but there is a conflict, so we would have to move the date. And so I think we want to have some conversation, propose some dates that we can have it, but I think there is some action that we would need to make.
I would agree. All righty, if that's it, this meeting is adjourned.